... City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, October 21st, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street will now come to order. We will have invocation by the Reverend Brian Short of Grace Christian Fellowship Church. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Again, Mayor, thank you, Council, for allowing the great privilege and honor it is to be able to pray before this City Council and for our beloved city. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you so much for your presence here tonight. We thank you, Lord, we're not meeting here just as people, but your presence is here. And Holy Spirit, we pray that you will just guide the thoughts and the actions and the discussion and the decisions, Father, of this council. We thank you for our city. We thank you for what it stands for. And I pray that you will just give special anointing and special guidance to the City Council members as they steer this city in the right direction. We pray that their decisions will be acceptable in your sight, will be reflective of your values and of your word. And we thank you, Father. We thank you that we live in trying times, but we thank you, Father, that through your love, your mercy, your grace, and your power, Father, we can move forward and do what is right in having done all to stand. And we thank you, and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Young?
Councilwoman Carson?
Here.
Councilwoman DeGerris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Cornman?
Here.
Councilman Black?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you, Clerk.
We do have a forum.
Thank you. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
Mayor, I perceive a conflict of interest on action required item FF, and I'll excuse myself from the room at that time.
Okay, thank you so noted.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to speak on a point of personal privilege.
Please.
Whenever I first decided to run for the City Council nearly three years ago, I said I wanted to do my part to contribute to a community that means a lot to me. I graduated from high school here and I went to Three Rivers College. I raised my family here and I spent my entire career working in criminal justice system to try and better our community. I have always dared to do my best to be fair and do right by others. However, I know that running for and holding any office results sometimes in unfair comments. I also know that when discussing something very important like a City Hall and a police station, emotions are heightened. However, some of the comments made by certain people have reached a point of ridiculousness. Some of us have been accused of filling our pockets, catering to special interests, and showing disloyalty. I have yet to see any evidence come forward to support these ridiculous comments, not to mention it has been said about me and others that we haven't done anything for this city and we don't care about Poplar Bluff. I believe my family has done a lot for this city. As I said earlier, I spent my entire working life serving our community in criminal justice here. My own father, a highway patrolman, shed a lot of blood. He was shot twice in the line of duty here in the Poplar Bluff area. Now because of some of these ridiculous comments that have been made without merit, there are individuals threatening this council with gun violence. I thank those responsible for making these baseless claims. Owe it to the community to stop this. I have nothing to hide. I have no interest to which I am catering. I'm a volunteer trying to do the best I can to serve a city I love. I have asked the chamber to allow me to use the use of their meeting room on Thursday, October 24th at 4:00 PM so I can be available to any citizens who would like to discuss City Hall and police station locations. We have been told by city administration that citizen input is not to be a back-and-forth question-and-answer session, so I look forward to holding my own citizen input where I can answer questions and explain why I support Chief Danny Whitley's recommendation for the police station to go on Shelby Road. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Please.
May I report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tony Wallace. My wife and I live at 2225 Lee Street here in Poplar Bluff. Most of you are familiar with who I am. Those that don't know me, I ask for your indulgence, please. I went to work here in 1978 for the police department, retired in 2008. It was my pleasure to have served the citizens of this town. It was an honor. Prior to that, I worked at Scott County Sheriff's Department for two hours, or two years, rather. Maybe it seemed like two hours. Prior to that, three years in the United States Military, serving both here and abroad with the 2nd Infantry Division, DMZ, South Korea. During the course of my 35-year career in law enforcement and the military, I served under many company commanders, provost marshals, one sheriff, and numerous police chiefs right here in Poplar Bluff. None of them measured to the standards which I hold Danny Whitley to. The man is impeccable. His credentials are unquestionable. His heart is sincerely in the right place. I ask that you consider his learned opinion on the location of the new police department structure and any other input he may have. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the service that you provide to citizens of this town. God bless you.
Thank you.
If there's no other way, we will go to item seven, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may do so. Seeing none?
Motion should we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. The City Council will discuss a downtown City Hall building site.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You'll remember several meetings ago, we were given options on City Hall and Police Station, and the council at that time chose to locate City Hall and Police Station if the property on Shelby Road was acquired. At the following meeting, there was quite a bit of, quite a few members of the community that came up to oppose that. A few days later, members of the council came out publicly in the newspaper and said they would support City Hall downtown. Not really sure how to proceed with this. Was kind of asked at the last meeting by a couple of council members to put this on the agenda tonight. I don't know if we need a resolution or an ordinance saying that you would like to put it downtown or like to leave City Hall downtown. I'll just kind of open this up for discussion between the council members and any input from the city attorney as far as a resolution or an ordinance goes.
Mr. Richardson, what would be the correct procedure if the council wishes to do this?
There is no particular formal procedure. As you know, this council can take formal action and has, on occasion, on many subjects in the past, and then change their minds. So any ordinance or resolution that might be passed is always going to be subject to revision or repeal at some future point. If the council feels that they need to state firmly for the benefit of the public, the taxpayers, or for members of this council, what the intent is, then I would suggest, and it would be easy to draft, a resolution which you could pass at the next meeting saying that it is your intent to locate your City Hall downtown. How you define downtown will be, I'll need some guidance from you on that. Clearly, I believe, from the discussions and the statements of council, that it is the intention that it goes somewhere on the property that we currently own along Black River, which includes the old Firestone Building, the parking, multi-level parking garage, and the old Lucidly Hospital, which is where I presume that you would want to have it. I also presume that you would want further guidance from architectural and design engineers as to exactly where you would put it on that site. So I would suggest that if you want to propose a resolution, that you allow me to draft it liberally enough to include it on that property that we own along the Black River between Second Street and Black River and Vine Street and, I can't remember the street, past Oak Street, the one-way street.
Elm Street.
Elm Street. Elm.
Elm, Elm Street. And I think that would be sufficient and be satisfactory probably to this council and to the public.
Make a motion that we ask the city attorney to prepare such a resolution along the lines that he has stated, which I could no ways repeat myself. I think we all understand the sentiment.
I'll second that motion.
Point of discussion, should that also say City Court? City Hall and City Court?
Isn't City Court included in City Hall?
That was not the question that Councilman Black posed to me. We do know that under recent changes in both federal and state law, that as long as we operate a municipal court, we will have to have a municipal courtroom. And we also know by law that the municipal courtroom cannot be connected in any way to the law enforcement facilities. So it would make sense, and I think all the recommendations that we have seen recently would say that you would either have it as a dedicated area within your city administrative complex or, and/or, that you might even be able to double-use the council chambers as a municipal court, which is a very good idea, and some other cities have been doing that. So if Mr. Councilman Black wants to amend that to include municipal court in that resolution, I will certainly be happy to draft it into it.
I would like to, and then I might add a comment if I might. We have seen some cities that have done this. It seems to be a pretty current way. I, for one, initially was not in the favor of that, but when it comes to the cost that's involved, it does now make sense to me for us to do that. And there's certainly some things that we have seen in some of those rooms that are used for both court and for council that is beneficial for all those folks that use it, and certainly I think that can be provided.
I think I can draft the resolution in such a way as that we include the municipal court in the city administrative complex, and then ultimately, that may be a very good decision to make. All we know is that we have been given guidance, which is not guidance, it's edict, that as long as we have a municipal court system, we will have a municipal court, and it will not in any way be housed in the same facility as law enforcement. And so your options are, you can either include it within your municipal administrative governance complex, either as a separate room or a dual-purpose room, or you can build a standalone in some third place, which doesn't make a lot of sense at all. And so if I understand what you all are saying, then the resolution will state that the municipal court facility will be housed within the general administrative facility for City Hall. Is that what I'm hearing everybody say?
And the exact floor plan can still be finalized.
Correct, and it will be finalized, and I'm sure chewed on and revised several times along the way. But I think that if I draft the resolution in that fashion, then it'll give you enough flexibility to go ahead with your planning with the promise that you are making, the commitment you're making by this resolution to the public, that that will all be housed downtown along Black River.
Yes. I've actually got a question. In the ordinance or the resolution, what if we decide, obviously, everybody's for downtown, but what if we decide or we find a better location downtown at another time, maybe, you know, maybe ease the burden on the taxpayer a little bit?
Once again, any resolution that you pass is subject to repeal or revision. At this point in time, as we have gone through this for, you know, 70 years or so, there are no current locations that are under consideration. That doesn't mean that one might not pop up tomorrow, Councilman, and I certainly understand your question. But I think Councilman Black's intent was, in his resolution, which you all have not voted on, was to house it on the currently owned property along Black River, and unless you defeat that motion, or unless I've misunderstood his motion, it would be there. And then if something came up in the future, then you all certainly would have the authority to change your mind.
I think it's permissible to speak. Now I think there's a possibility, and as Mr. Cornman said, of an alternative location than that. I'm not saying that that's not the location necessarily, but there may be a situation where it would be a savings to locate it somewhere else downtown, and it would still be downtown. Do we necessarily want to lock in to a resolution that says it has to be at the Oak Street location?
You don't have to be locked into anything that you don't resolve and pass by this council. And as we all know, there is no secret, there have been other alternatives that have been explored, and it's no longer private Nyberg Clinic property. There have been some discussions with Southern Property, Southern Bank, acquisition of the current location of City Hall and some additional property that they own. There's been some suggestion that we put it on the parking lot, you know, between Fifth Street and Minute Print. There are lots of other locations. I don't know how to define downtown. You know, downtown, does it mean old town? Does downtown go out to Westwood Boulevard? Does downtown stop at Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Sixth Street, Ninth Street? Where does it stop? How do you define downtown? And that's why I would suggest at least that there be enough clarity. I guess your call, not my job, not my judgment, but it seems like that you are closing in on pulling the trigger on something, and the obvious location as we know it, as it exists today, is the property that you currently own between Pine Street and Elm Street bordered by Second Street and the Black River. But once again, I'm just scribbling up what you all decide, so just let me know.
Is there any further discussion? We will recognize, Mr. Smith, please state your name, address, and who you represent, please.
Thank you. I'm Robert Smith. I live at 501 North Fifth Street. I have business at 502 Vine Street. I want to thank the council for deciding to agree to put City Hall downtown. But again, oh, thank you. As Mr. Richardson is probably being simpler than, I respect Mr. Richardson for what, I wish that we would take his example of what he did to the Circuit Court Room and to the Juvenile Court Building. He did that at very little cost to the county and did an excellent job, and he should be respected and thanked. Actually, his opinion as to maybe downtown should be asked toward that, too, though he is a simple scribbler. His family's done more for this town than I believe any other family that I know of, and he's to be respected for that. Well, to transfer that respect to everyone is not that easy. There was no decision to change the City Hall downtown until a massive outcry was made and items were presented. And people's actions speak louder than whatever they may say at a City Council meeting or how else they'd cry about their personal honor. The people want some responsiveness from the City Council, and the location, City Council of the City Hall should be where it was always planned to be, on Second Street along with the court across from the jail. I understand the complications Mr. Richardson now has to go through because of jail. I guess the police and the new laws say that the police station cannot be next to the City Court and other facilities, and that's something to realize, but I don't know if I can address the location of the police station now, or should I wait?
It's coming up next.
Okay, thank you. So as for, I'm not sure, I can ask some questions, but I don't expect an answer, so I'll do that because it's regarding to the location. I would want, I think the citizens of Poplar Bluff would like to know is the status of the deal-in-trux-of contract to design City Hall. And I think a lot of people ask me about that and whether or not they're still going to be under contract to design the police station, which is next. And then it goes to the location. Maybe this is going to come up in the city manager's report, too, because I know sometimes a lot of clarifications are made there. So a status of the consultant's contract, whether or not the city has terminated that or is pursuing that. And there will be public forum for the citizens of Poplar Bluff to ask the questions regarding to the City Hall and Police Station. Well, I do applaud Councilman Davis's stance in open session at 4:00, when most people don't get off work at 5:00, so I'm questioning the timeline on that, and whether or not the other city council members who were supporting that location would be there to honor the republic and to state why they want the police station in the most expensive place.
Mr. Smith, if I could interrupt, that starts at 4:00.
Yes. I heard that. I think I have the floor. Do I have the floor, or do I not?
Well, I wanted to clarify.
I have the floor.
Sir, why don't you let the councilman clarify a statement that you made?
He may do so.
Let's be civil here.
Okay, then I should be asked to yield the floor, should I not be?
Robert, why don't you just let him answer?
Okay. Can I go ahead and ask?
You made a very curt statement that he was holding it before working people could get there. He was trying to clarify. Let's try to be civil here, okay?
I would do so, but it seems like the rules that have been enforced here, been set forth, are to quash public input. But go ahead, Mr. Councilman Davis, please respond.
Mr. Smith, start time is 4:00. It's intended to be from 4:00 to 6:00.
Thank you. And how many others, I guess, you're the only councilperson present, then I suppose? So also hopefully then through the city manager's report, we can also have some information about the status of the timeline for architect drafting some plans for the new location. And that location has been selected, I think, several times over, so I'm hoping that that will not be changed. But again, let me remind the city council members, too, there is a election next April, and don't worry, that will be a very well politicized election.
We're all aware of that, sir. We don't need that information.
I didn't ask if you did or not, Mr. Black. Thank you.
I didn't ask you for any talk either.
Does the council have any further discussion on item A?
Do we have, have we amended his original motion to include the municipal court?
Thank you, Councilman DeGerris. I don't believe we have. I think if the second will be withdrawn, then Councilman Black can amend his own motion to state it with a little bit more clarity regarding municipal court facilities. Is the second withdrawn? It was your second.
Remove the second to allow for an amendment.
Yes, sir, to include the City Court in that process.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
This will be for a voting session on our November 4th meeting, and this will be considered as a workshop for that, so it will be a voting session item only.
Okay, all right. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Item B, the City Council will discuss the acquisition of property.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you'll remember, you asked the city attorney and I to work on a sales contract for the property on Shelby Road. I'd like to report back that although the contract hasn't been finalized yet, I would say the most important items in the contract are finished. What we have negotiated with First Missouri State Bank is to sell the property to the city of Poplar Bluff, the entire 58 acres, for the amount of $1,005,000. The appraised value of that property, back when we had to buy property from the bank to do Shelby Road several years ago, the appraised value was $4,477,349. So basically, if you take the difference of that, the bank is donating $3,477,299. And I realize these are appraised value, and property is only worth what somebody will pay for it, but I think that's very generous on the bank. We don't, of course, need 58 acres, possibly four acres if we build the police station and maybe leave room for a fire station at that site. We would parcel that off, and my recommendation to the council is to try to sell off the rest of that property, reimburse ourselves for the $1,050. Any other funds that are left over to be deposited into general fund to get us out of our mess that we were left in several years ago. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Basically, we're getting the property for 22% or 23% of the appraised value.
Mr. Mayor, I think the chief, police chief, did an excellent job in a recent editorial or article in the paper of explaining his rationale. I have heard many that support our police chief and his thinking. I, you know, have talked with him about his rationale, and I know that many, if not all of the rest of you have, too, and I believe that is the right place for our citizens as far as the police station. And so I would make a motion that we just continue to proceed unless you need further clarification in the motion than that.
Can there just be some discussion now?
Just a second, just a second. Give us two, three more minutes. Are we ready for citizen input now?
Yes.
Okay.
We're on the subject that he wishes to speak on.
We're on the subject that he wishes to speak on.
Okay.
We need a second before we have discussion.
Did we not have a second to that, I'm sorry?
No.
We don't?
Stand corrected, is there a second, Mr. Mayor?
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, okay. Now, further discussion. You may proceed.
Uh, so do you state my name again, it is Robert L. Smith, I live at 501 North Fifth Street, Poplar Bluff. Fifty-eight acres. That seems completely illogical to me and probably to the citizens of Poplar Bluff. A million dollars for fifty-eight acres. We're not in the business of buying in real estate and speculating and trying to sell it later for what we don't need. As much as I respect Mr. Wiley, I've known him for, worked with him for thirty years, he can be wrong occasionally. And the location there is wrong. There was no getting around a one million price tag, and we have owned land, several areas of town that we could use. If he doesn't want to be downtown, I have no great problem with that. But let's don't take prime real estate, retail real estate, and buy it for a million dollars. I don't see how that's saving taxpayers any amount of money. And that is exactly where, why there's such outcry about this council at this point. Total irresponsibility of buying fifty-eight acres for a million dollars is inconceivable. And, and I think the citizens of that will be reflected, the citizens outcry after they hear about this. But I presume that will not stop the four of you from doing what you're doing. And not, I'm sure Mr. Garris, Councilman DeGarris, he's been a police officer, I would like to personally have his opinion on this, but I know he can't talk now. But I think the police operate from a zone, and whether the location of the police station is not that critical anymore. And to have a twenty-seven thousand square foot building that I believe at one time he said he needed, that would be one thousand square feet for every police officer. So I believe there's twenty-seven active police officers. And I think those police officers and the new hired police officers would like the expenses cut down and maybe use that for city benefits. But that be as may, I'm sure you will make a decision based on your own interest, not on the public's. Thank you.
I would just like to clarify something, that is capital money that will be used to purchase the property and build, and it cannot, and I've said two hundred times before, cannot be used for benefits and salaries. And you should know that, being a former city attorney.
I know that, but also, what's it gonna cost to maintain a twenty-seven thousand square feet building? That's not gonna cost any more money?
And what makes you the expert on how much square footage they need?
Well, that's what he said at one point, that's what you guys said in the.
No, you're saying, and you said in your paper article that we don't need that kind of space. So what makes you the expert on that? That's what I'd like to know.
I just wanted to say, how many square feet do you need then? Tell me.
Twenty-seven thousand square feet. We've compared that to other stations with comparable personnel, and that's what we've come up with. Where do you come up with your figures?
Maybe common sense.
So how many square feet do you think we need?
Ask the architect, that might be a good start.
Architect said thirty-two.
Architect said thirty-two a few years ago.
Okay, I still think that's too many.
And what's your basis of that opinion? That's what I'd like to know.
My basis of opinion is that I don't see where you need twenty-seven thousand.
But why? Why do you see that we don't need that much?
Why do you think, why don't you tell me first?
I just told you, because we've compared it with police stations of other communities comparable to our police station, and that's what they have.
Okay, then have a.
You know, you're not, you're thinking about just the officers, we are talking about storage of, a place to pull in.
Let's see the plans. If I'm wrong, show me the plans.
Plans are not done yet, we haven't hired an architect.
There you go.
Okay, gentlemen, we have a long agenda.
You're an angry, mean little man.
Do we have a motion to move this to the vote, voting session, or?
I think there is a, a motion, but, and a second on, for discussion, but I would, Mr. Mayor, ask for some clarification on the motion. As I understood it, the motion was to proceed with the, with the acceptance of the gift slash acquisition of the property, there was nothing in there about a police station. Presumably, I guess that's a separate issue, because you have issues as to what to do with the property, police station, fire station, water tower, utility substation, parks and recreation, lots of things that could be done with it. I just need to clarify for our purposes for moving this ultimately to the voting session, or is this a motion to move to the voting session, the, the acquisition of the property, or are there additional conditions placed in that motion?
The intent of my motion was that we would move forward with the purchase of the property and acceptance of the gift, with the intended purpose of placing a police station there. Now later, fire, if I'll just go ahead and amplify on the motion to speak to it. Fire chief says we need another station out town, that way, that would be an excellent place. There are, there is some land there also that the fire department can use for training and operations. That might not be the best buildable land on, but it would work fine for their training and operations. Also, if, if there, if we need another water tower in that area that's growing. But for the immediate time, it would be for the proposed purpose of a police station, and then as we see other needs, and likely, we can, it'd be nice, councilman turns his phone off, sorry. That, you know, some of that can be sold, and, and we may well recoup the total cost. Did I help you or done a rapid?
Well, whatever you all want to do, you're the elected officials, I just need to know how to draft it. So, the ordinance is for the, to proceed and to accept and approve the negotiations for the acquisition of the land. Do you want additional stipulations placed in that, or do you just want the ordinance drafted for the acquisition of the land? And that probably goes beyond, maybe it doesn't go beyond what was seconded and discussed. I just need to know how to draft it and what to include in it.
I don't know all the specific legalities in there, but if we're purchasing the land for the specific purpose of that, I would think it needs to be included in that.
Okay, we could say with the anticipated placement of the police station?
Yeah, you know, fifty-eight acres of land with, you know, with a five million dollar price tag, you know, for twenty-three percent of that, you could buy it for anything you wanted. There are no conditions or stipulations placed in it, except that you can't sell off any parcel that would be used to build a competing bank on. But other than that, there are no stipulations or conditions whatsoever. And you don't need, unless you just choose tonight to, to do it at the same time. It's, it's, it's a very good acquisition if you don't have any stated purpose for it, knowing that you have all of these other contingencies out there, short range and long range, and the ability already known that you can recoup the million dollars with the sale of tiny parcels of it that, to buyers that are already interested in buying. So you don't need to say, we're going to put a police station there, or we intend to put a fire station there, or we intend to put a water tower there, or we intend to put a, a substation there, electric substation there, or we intend to take forty acres and work with the Parks and Recreation Department to put a park out west. You don't have to say any of that. It's a, it's up to whatever you all want to put in it. You're going to make a decision on your police station at some point in time. You don't have to make it tonight. The acquisition, the acceptance of this gift and the acquisition of this land can certainly be two separate items, if that's what you choose. It does give you the option to put the police station out there if you acquire it. You can't put the police station out there until you acquire it.
I don't have an issue either way, myself, but, but if we want to leave it totally open-ended, neither do I have a problem just saying at this point we acquire it.
Accept the gift.
Huh?
Yeah.
Thinking, right now, we, we think we know why, but never know what could happen down the road before we get it done.
So, all I need is some clarity on what to draft. I said, all I need is some clarity. I work for you all, tell me what to draft up, and I will either include a stipulation that you have made a decision that the police station is going to go out there, or that you've just made a decision that you're going to acquire the land and then have it available if that ultimately is what appears you all are leaning toward. You don't need to include it in this, in this proposed ordinance tonight.
Seems to me like if we made the motion to acquire the property with the anticipation of placing the police station there, does not permanently lock us into that, but I think it certainly says that's, that is our intentions, then we could move forward.
Well, I mean, it's clear from your discussions that that's what you're anticipating. It's, it's a little bit of surplusage for an ordinance to put it in there.
Would you like, would you suggest that we go ahead and name it? I'm, I'm ready, I think we're of a majority tonight.
I, Councilman, that is beyond my province, okay? All I need to know is exactly stated what the motion is, so that I can draft the ordinance to comply.
Perhaps some of our councilmen might speak to it.
Well, for the purpose of the building project and going forward, if we just pass this to purchase the land, we're just kind of left there if we haven't made a statement that that's what we want to do, is build, build there at that location, it seems to me. I mean, are we, we're just kind of stalled if we don't go ahead and say that's our intention of building there, the police station, is.
I'm happy to draft it that way if that's what the motion is and, and what, and the motion that passes. Yes, sir.
Is your motion on?
Let's draft it that way then, that'll be my motion, and the second will have to agree or not agree, and not.
The second?
Yes, I agree.
Why don't?
Why don't we redo?
For parliamentary purposes, why don't you withdraw your second?
I withdraw my second.
And you amend your motion. Just help the city lawyer out here so that he can draft it.
I'm trying to.
That's what you want, okay?
That we move forward with the purchase of the land and acceptance of the gift with plans at this time to place our police station there.
Second.
A motion has been made, and second, to acquire the property with the intent to locate the police station.
And it, and it'll just really come back to us in the, in the, in voting session then on November fourth?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, will this be to move to the voting session November fourth?
Yes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passed. Item C, the city council will review a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a request to rezone property located at fifteen nineteen and fifteen twenty-nine Cooley Street owned by Andrew and Deborah Clark. Mr. Winter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As he stated, the property owners are Andrew and Deborah Clark, and they're requesting to rezone property at fifteen nineteen and fifteen twenty-nine Cooley to C2 General Commercial. It's currently zoned RD1 residential duplex. And there's your two vacant lots on Cooley Street that are directly behind the Fish and Pig Restaurant. The, the intent is to use these for parking for employees at the Fish and Pig Restaurant. And like he stated, this is a, Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the approval of this request.
Make motion, pass to the voting session November fourth.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Item D, the city council will review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the Ball Lane Water Tower demolition project. Mr. Bob.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Ball Lane Demol Project is a demolition of a hundred thousand gallon water tank which was built in the nineteen forties and began leaking approximately five years ago when we took it out of service. Since the construction of five hundred thousand gallon water tower on Vandover Road and the five hundred thousand gallon barren road water tower, we no longer need the Ball Lane tank. As you can see from the attached bid tab, the low bidder was Pittsburgh Tank and Tower Maintenance Company out of Henderson, Kentucky, in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. Greg Bell, the project manager at Smith &amp; Company, has reviewed both bids, and his recommendation is for the base bid only. Mr. Bell felt the bid alternate, that included the removal, the concrete foundation was too high, we would do that in-house. This was discussed at an earlier advisory board meeting, and the board would recommend to the council that we accept the low base bid from Pittsburgh Tank and Tower Maintenance Company out of Henderson, Kentucky, in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. Any questions?
Make motion, pass to the voting session, November fourth.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, the city council will, will discuss a request for making an appointment to the airport advisory board. Mr. Mathenham.
Yes, Mr. Mike Wiseman resigned from the airport board. Mr. Ryan Walls has applied to take the position on the airport advisory board. He is a pilot, and we are recommending that he fill that position.
Motion is to be moved to the voting session, November fourth.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Item nine, action required items. AA Bill Number eight-one-eight-two. The city council will take action on an ordinance for a lease agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and Pleasant Hill Missionary Baptist Church.
Move for first reading of Bill Number eight-one-eight-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff to enter into a lease agreement with Pleasant Hill Missionary Baptist Church for the lease of land located at nine fifteen Garfield Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading of Bill eight-one-eight-two.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff to enter into a lease agreement with Pleasant Hill Missionary Baptist Church for the lease of land located at nine fifteen Garfield Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption of Bill eight-one-eight-two.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Parson, yes. Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number eight-one-eight-two is adopted. Item BB, Bill Number eight-one-eight-three, the city council will take action on an ordinance amending board, board membership for the residential housing advisory board.
Motion for first reading of Bill eight-one-eight-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff amending the membership criteria for the residential housing advisory board for the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance of the City of Poplar Bluff amending the membership criteria for the Residential Housing Advisory Board for the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number 8183 is adopted. Item CC, Bill Number 8184, the City Council will take action on an ordinance annexing and zoning property located at 3390 Canal Boulevard and owned by Jerry Ann Roland and Stacy Blankenship.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 8184.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 3390 Canal Boulevard, Butler County, Missouri, and owned by Jerry Ann Roland and Stacy Blankenship.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8184.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 3390 Canal Boulevard, Butler County, Missouri, and owned by Jerry Ann Roland and Stacy Blankenship.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8184.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number 8184 is adopted. Item DD, Bill Number 8185, the City Council will take action on an ordinance amending section 405.330, Board of Adjustment, C, amending the appeal fee.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, code of city ordinances, section 405.330, parentheses C, relating to Board of Adjustment Appeal Fees.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8185.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, code of city ordinances, section 405.330, parentheses C, relating to Board of Adjustment Appeal Fees.
Free for the adoption. Ready motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number 8185 is adopted. Item EE, Bill Number 8186, the City Council will take action on an ordinance to approve disposal of antiquated records from the Municipal Utilities.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records from the Municipal Utilities Department.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records from the Municipal Utilities Department.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion.
Bill Number 8186 is adopted. Item FF, Bill Number 8187, the City Council will take action on an ordinance on a recommendation for the 11th Street Bridge Grant Project.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8187.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance accepting a bid for the construction of bridge and related improvements on South 11th Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance accepting a bid for the construction of bridge and related improvements on South 11th Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8187.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number 8187 is adopted. Item GG, Resolution Number 1906, the City Council will take action on a resolution making an appointment to the Municipal Utilities Board.
Motion for reading of Bill Resolution 1906.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
A resolution of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, making an appointment to the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption of Resolution 1906.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Resolution Number 1906 is adopted. Item HH, the City Council of the City of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the open meetings law in section 610.0021.1.2.3.9.11.12.13.14 of RSMO, following the City Manager's Report.
Motion for end of session following the City Manager's Report.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Just one item, really. As you know, the outside of this building, the product that's on there, it's drivid or drive it, I don't know what it's actually called, but one of those two terms. If you'll notice, on the south end of the building and around the back of the building, a lot of areas are getting streaked with black. It's not near as bad on the front or on the other side. What we plan to do is, we've talked to a couple of power wash people and try to clean those two areas off this year, and then possibly the two areas next year. Also, we're working on trying to replace the flooring in the lobby of the Coliseum. The tiles are starting to pop loose, and we need to get that done, if not this year, at least by next year. So just wanted to let you know that we're working on that. I really don't have anything else to report.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We adjourn. Let's take about a five-minute break and-